Good opportunity for me to come here and to share from God's word.
Devu nekka vaakkiyandi, pankotankoy, idhi prabhu nagichnokokappa avakasham.
And I'm very happy to see brother John Lee after a long time.
Allah lozu teravata, John Lee nku daachodan chalas antasham. Thank you, Sense.
So it's really a great thing that we come together and to learn from God's word.
Devu nekka vaakkiyani, manam andaram elach chiri kalisi dyanan chaito, avagappa avakasham.
Though we read the same passage several times, but each time we read, the Lord and His Spirit speaks to us in very different ways.
Devu nekka vaakkiyani, chadave pratiisari okokrotta konaamlo, devu ni atma manato matlada doontad.
This morning also, I would like to bring your attention to a very familiar passage which you might have read several times.
Miru isai inkal pele manam dyanan chese baga, entakumdu miru chalaasalu dyanan chesi gunni ondavach.
I would like to bring your attention to Genesis chapter thirteen from verse nine to eleven.
Adamoodva diayam adhikannam, tumdu nunchi padakundu varukunnavachinaaloo, manam chadukunda.
I request brother John Lee to read this.
Idesamantiyu neelthu nonnadi kada, dai chesi, nanu vidi chige, veruganundumo. Neevi yedamathattnakku velin yedala, nenu kudithattnakunu, neevu kudithattnakku velin yedala, nenu yedamathattnakunu velidhunani. Lotu tho chapaga, lotu tanakkanulithi, yaradan pranthamanthati nee chuchenu. Yohova, sudama gumara, anupattanamalano naasenumu cheyekku manuku, soyeru kuvatsu varuku. Adantiyu, yohova thottavalenu, ayuktu desemu valenu, neelu paru desemayu unden. Kaavati lotu, tanaku yaradan pranthamanthati nee arparu chukuni, thurpuga prayanam cheschenu. Atlu varu, vakarinokuru verei perei.
May the Lord bless his reading portion to our hearts.
Sudabulna lekina bagalni, prabhu mana prasyam korakai devinsunugaka.
We have read this passage several times and we might have heard many Bible study and many messages on this passage.
Chalaasalu i vaakki bagani miru chadave untaro, chala sandeshalu dinu nundi miru vinayuntaro.
Once again, as we sit in the presence of God, we pray that the Lord may speak to us and tell us what He wants us from our lives.
Marok sari devun sanidlo, prabhu tho chiptam, prabha, nenu enchiala neevu korthunnavo, naato matlado, ani manam prabhu ni adugada.
Especially as we read this portion, this is a passage where Abraham and Lord, they are making a very important decision in their life.
Abraham lotu, tamajivitamlo chala pramukkayana, nirnayam tiskuna bhaga nee chadukunav.
And as we know, especially for a young person like Lord who was with Abraham for a long time. And for him, taking a very important decision for his future life is very, very important.
Idhirnayamlo, abramutho poliste yavanasturugavunna lotu, tanajivitaniki chala chala, athi pramukkayana nirnayanani ataru cheybota unna.
As we know that, somebody has said whatever we are because of the decision that we have taken in the past.
Okai neeman chiparante, i rojina manameyamayunnamu ante, orvavu, okanirnayanani manan chesam. Mananirnayanibate prasuttho i stithlo manamunna.
So, decisions are very common in our life. We make decisions every day.
Nirnayalu manajivitamlo sarva sadhana, i rozu anekanirnayalu manan chastam.
But there are very important decisions that we have to make, which affect our future life.
Mana baushetini prabhavithun chese, okapramukkayana nirnayanani, appaka manam andaramu chial.
Especially like in decisions on where I'm going to study, what will be my career, whom I'm going to marry, and where I'm going to live and all those things.
Nirnayalu chesemukkayana, konaali enti ante, nenu enchadukavali, na bausheti emti, yavani vivahan chesukavali, nenu yakkadasi tilavali, nivas munnavali, ani vaatipai mananirnayalu chial sunthu.
As Abraham and Lord are making a very important decision here and we are going to see how that affected them in their life.
Abraham lotu, varijiivitalo jerigina idhirnayam, varibaushetni ala prabhavithun chesindi, ani rani manan neechkunta.
As we know that Lord was a young person and he was with Abraham for a long time and learned a lot of things from Abraham as a spiritual father.
Abraham aapniyamayana tenriga, yavanasturayana lotu, anekamayana paatalo, abramunu neechkunadu, chala kalam abramto unna.
But when he take, when a time came to make a decision in his life, he has chosen a very bad decision in his life, going to a place where wicked people live.
Entraga unnaputiki koda, lotu chesnetu ante, eti vicharakarameenupani enti ante, durmagulunde chootuk velalani nirnayenchkunadu.
It means indirectly, he has forsaken the place which the Lord has given to him.
Nizaniki chappalsina sangati enti ante, devudu tanakichinatuvanti, chootunu ataru vidi chepeta.
In other word, we can say he has forsaken his spiritual father.
Marok maatlo chappalante, lotu tanak aapniyatantrani vidi chpetti, bail deripuyad.
As we know that always Abraham used to build.
Manamo yepudu erugudumo, abramo yepudu koda, balipitaalukate, panilomuntadu abram.
And I, your bandwidth is low it seems. Sorry brother, actually it was disconnected, the rain is, sorry. So, we see here, as we know that Abraham used to build an altar and used to spend time in worshiping the Lord. So, when Lord is leaving Abraham, he is leaving the fellowship of God, the altar of God and going to live among the wicked people.
Abraham balipitemso sammanamunnavad, haradhana chooti, praradhana chooti sammanamunnavad. Ippudu lotu abramunu vidi chepetadu ante, haradhana ni, praradhana ni vidi chpetti, durmagulamadya nivas munadankorakai, ataru nirnayenchadu ani artho.
So whatever may be, whatever the decision he has taken, he went out, he left Abraham and started living among the people who were wicked in the sight of God.
Ee mayinappu koda, devunidristiki durmagulamadya, yavarete unnavo, varimadya ataru, nivas munadankorakai, bail dervelipuyad.
So what happened? How did this affected in his life?
Idhirnayam lotu jivitammeda yala padindi prabhavam.
Please turn with me to Genesis chapter nineteen.
Panthumdevad diayin darches teravande, adhikannamu, panthumdevad diay.
So, chapter nineteen is written after a long time where, when Lord left Abraham and Canaan and started living in Sodom.
Panthumdevad diaymu yaka charitra, apattake lotu abramnu vidi chpetti chala kalamayindi, apudu raivadindi.
So how did this affected him? It is written here in chapter nineteen.
Adamoodu loavatu chesina nirnayam, dani paritam panthumdevo raivadindi.
So in verse one, we read like this.
Madhiti vachnumlo elamanan chustam.
Please read brother.
Isai inkalamandu, ayyatharu devadutalo, sudama cherunappatiiki, lotu sudama gaviniyada kuchundiyundenu. Lotu varni chuchi, varni edirkunutaku lechi, saastanga namaskaramu chesi.
Yeah, thank you brother. Here it is written that Lord was sitting at the city gate.
Lotu gaviniyada kuchunna vikti ga lotunu chustam.
Why was he sitting there at the gate?
Yendukulu lotu gaviniyada kuchunadu.
It is not just for the time pass.
Gaviniyada kalakshapankoraku kadu.
But in those days, sitting at the city gate has a very deep meaning, very important meaning in it.
Yavareena gaviniyada kuchunnavaru ante, adinallo, dani okalotainatuvanti arthamundi.
Especially as we know that the court, the, all the cases where around held in the city gate, all the judgments were passed and all the major decisions were taken at the city gate.
Adinallo, tagadalani, vivadalani, gaviniyada mathrme parishkarinsavade.
That is what we read in many other books of the Bible.
Bible lo chala pustikallo ade manam chadutam.
So it is written here that Lord was sitting at the city gate.
Lotu gaviniyada kuchunnavadu, ante, idhi dani artham.
He was not like one among other people, those who were in the crowd, but he was holding a very important position in the city.
Lotu gaviniyada kuchunnavadu ante, sudhmalo unnavu samanuyadu kadu, ataru nyayam keechay chota stailo unnavadu ani artho.
If you read verse nine of the same chapter, we will be able to read that what kind of position that he had at Sodom.
Tomudlo, panthumdi tomudlo, sudhmalo atane kunnavantishtai emto chapabaddindi. Idi manushulu naainti kochiyunnavarganika, varni vireen chiyadu ani, varli thanti varliyam annarante, vedavado manalooniki, paradesiga vachi, tearpariga unna chususunnavaru.
He become a judge among Sodom, the city of Sodom.
Sudama patanani kia ataru, tearpariga unnavadu, ani idhi gamrensal.
So, if in a worldly sense, we can think that the judge is a big position among the other community, among the people of the world.
Arojulno ledha prasutthamayana prakanchamlo, tearpariga unnavantechala perdashtai.
So it is like a magistrate, having a great power, having lot of money, a lot of respect among the community, among the people there.
Pradalamadya dhanamu, kanata, alage adhikaramu kaligina tventi, okavunnatamayana stai, tearpariga.
But the question comes, how did he become so successful though he has left God and his fellowship, then how could he succeed in his life?
Resne evati ante, devu ni vidi chpetti naputiki, yalaugunathu vijyavantamayadu, ani idhi presna.
Why did he come to such a high position in the city of Sodom?
Sudhmalo unnatamayana stai ki raavada nikala karana emiti.
I'll tell you my brother, this is not a position, but this is a trap of Satan.
Idhi ataru, ondinatuvanti stai emi kadu gani, idhi satan pannina udsu.
See, you might have also seen that many people, those who has forsaken the fellowship of God, those who have forsaken the truth of God, still they were able to succeed, but if you look at closely their life, you will be able to find there is an emptiness, there is a bitterness, there is a sadness in their life.
Ilokollo, devu ni vidi chpetti, agurudhi pundusunnavatluga kanabade varni miru chusiuntaro, adhi vijyam kadu gani, varu jivitamalo, okarikthastithini, emileeni stithini, ledha, okakatinamayatuvanti stithini, chesuni, varu rodyamlo unchkuntaro.
The same thing happened to this man, Lord, as he has taken a decision to live among the people, those who were wicked in the sight of God.
Devunidristlo dustulayana patnapu varu madhyaa, lotu stithi koda ide.
This evening, I would like to bring four special questions to Lord, like an interview. We are taking an interview of Lord, we are asking four question to Lord and we'll find the answer from him and we'll find out what was his condition there in Sodom.
Manu enchadavante, lotunu interview chetham, nalgu presnalni, lotunadugada, sudhmalo atane stithi emto, ippudu manak chalisstundi.
So the first question which we are going to ask to Lord is like that, Lord, you are a judge in city of Sodom, but tell us, how was your spiritual life in Sodom?
Lotu garo, tearpariga, sudhmalo, mi jivitamundi kada, aapniyastithi alaundi.
So first thing is, how was your spiritual life in Sodom?
Ayah, lotu garo, sudhmalo, mi aapniyamanastithi alaundi.
Please look at his answer in second Peter.
Petru rendaupatrikalo, aynasamadhanu mundu chodandi.
Chapter two verse seven and eight.
Petru rendaupatrika, rendavadjayam, yeedu yenbidivachinal, durmagulakama vikarayuttamayana naravadi chetha, bahubadhapadina neeti mantudagulotunu tapinchya, aa neeti mantudu, varimadyano kapurumundi. Tanu chusina vaatinabatyu, vininavaatinabatyu, varia akkaramamayana kriyalaveshyamlo, denna denna mo neeti galatana manassunu, noppinchukunuchu achena.
See, it is very clearly mentioned, I did not explain more about it, but we know that he was not happy in Sodom.
Idi vachina, nenek viverinsunu indugante, chala spastanga amshala chapabaddaye, okkamata, lotu sudhmalo santoshanga leidu.
So though he was a magistrate in the city of Sodom, but as we read here, he says every day, by looking at the people around, he was weeping, he was regretting for the decision that he has taken to come and live among these people.
A pradalamadya nivas munadu, lotu sudhama magistrate, ainapputiki koda, a prada akkrama jivitanavati, yedustune unna.
Yes, my dear brother and sister, the decision that we take in our life, we should not regret it, you know, later as far as the, it is connection with the Lord.
Prabhu visyamlo, mananirnayalu eevathe unnayo, prabhu ki baadunu kaliginsakodu, mananirnayalu.
My dear brother and sister, I remember one story like this, which I know, maybe you also might have heard in your childhood about a story of the Greek history.
Greek charitra sammanichinokakataan nen vinnan, bousha, miru koda vinayuntaro.
It is just a mythology story, it is not a true, it is said that one king who pleased God and God asked him, what do you want? And he said, whatever I touch, it should turn into gold.
Idhi kavalamo kalpana kada mathrme, aitha akadalo, ataru, emantadante, devu nadu chadaya, nenu eneepadkunna bangaranga maripovaliyani.
So the king's wish was granted by the God and king was so happy and he started touching so many flowers in the garden and it turned into gold.
A devata atane koorikano, maninchii, a sektini chindata, ippudu ataru yakkadikveli, emi padkunnavi, bangarma ipotundee, ataru pool padkunadu, avi bangaranga maripuyad.
Then he touched so many fruits in the garden and that also turned into gold.
Thottalo, pandlan padkunadu, avi koda bangaranga maripuyad.
Then he touched so many furniture in the home and everything turned into gold.
Intilo, vasthul padkunadu, furniture ni, ani bangaranga maripuyad.
So he was so excited, he was saying himself that I am so wise person, that I have made such a decision that I am a richest man in this earth.
Ianni bangaranga maripotunte, tanlotan anukunadata, tan yantatilivayinavadnu, indugante, tan i koorga koriye prakanchamlo, anndarigante, dhanavantudu kaavotunnavadu ananukunadu.
And finally, when he got hungry, people brought the food for him and when he touched the food, food also turned into gold.
Akariki atarika akaleinapudu, akkunnavaru, aynika aham tiskochero, ataru tenavoga, adhi kuda bangaranga maripoin.
He couldn't eat, he couldn't drink, everything was turning into gold.
Tagalaidu, tenalaidu, anta bangarme.
Finally, when daughter came to know about the father's such a condition, she came and she hugged him immediately, the daughter also turned into gold.
Idi parisitivenna kuthuru, tenrill chodda nikraga, a ataru, a men kowilinchkunadu, aame koda bangaru prasimuga maripoin.
That day, king started crying and weeping and regretting about the decision that he has chosen to have such a wish in his life.
Tanajivitamlo, patkunna pratidhi bangaran kavalanu koorukunna, aa nirnayanibati, yantodukkinchadu.
My dear brother and sister, even this Lord was also having such an experience in his life, though he was a magistrate in the city, but still spiritually, he was regretting every day and crying day and night.
Lotu sudhmalo magistrate style onnaputiki koda, a patanamalundi, divarathalu yedustuna vikti ga, badhapadutunnavadiga chustam.
So the first question was, you are a magistrate, but how was your spiritual life? And Lord answers, I am weeping every day.
Ayah, lotu garo, sudhmalo magistratega, mi yaka aapniyastithi enti ante, antadu nenu denna denna mo yedustune unna.
My life is full of tears.
Na jivitamanta kaniilu.
So let's go to the second question to Lord and we last, yeah.
Rendav presnaladugada, amlotuni.
Okay Lord, you know about God, believing God, did you tell anyone and brought them also to the same fellowship of God? Did you bring anyone to the Lord?
Rendav presnalotho, ayah, mi ku devu, nizamayana devu gurich chaliskaada, aa nizamayana devu sahavasundagarki, avarneyana nedipinchara.
Let us read his answer in chapter nineteen of Genesis and verse twelve to fourteen.
Panthumdevad diayam, panninunchi, patnalagu varu ko, aynasamadhanani manan chustam. Apudu a manushulu lotu tho, ekkana neeku, maravunnavu, ni alluni, ni kumarulano, ni kumarthilanu, idi uruloni kaligina varinandharani, velupalakutiskunidamo, memu idhi chootu naasenumu cheyavachitimi, varni gurchinamara, yohova sanidlo koppadayenu, gankaa, dani naasenumu cheyichaku, yohova mamunu pampina nee chapaga, lotu baitikveli, tanakumarthilanu, penladana, yana tanallulato, matladi lindi, idhi chooti vidi chepetidandi, yohova i patanamunu naasenumu cheybochunnavanichipeno, aitha ataru tanalluladristiki, egathaali chiyuva ni valayu unden.
The last line of the fourteen verse, it said that, but to his son-in-law, he seemed to be joking.
Akari maata, patnalagu vachnimalo, tanalluladristiki ataru egathaali chiyuva ni valayu unna.
See, what a painful for a parents, when children don't listen to the parents and make fun of them.
Pelalo, talidandala maata venukunda, talidandalni aata patistunte, talidandalki yantodukkamu.
My dear brother and sister, I have seen many Christian leaders, a very reputed leaders and they are very good spiritually, but I have seen their children are not able to listen to them and following the Lord.
Bhaktikalina, chala mandi talidandallanin chuseno, kani varipillalo, varimata, venaru, anusarinsaru.
So there is something, there is something happened because of that, he was not able to bring their family members in the presence of God or bring them to the ways of God.
Devu ni margamulonki, devun sanidhamulonki, varu raakapodanuki, akkada yedho, okasangatanlo jerigai.
The reason is, it is said in verse fourteen, the last verse, the son-in-law felt that the father-in-law is simply joking. It means, father-in-law never shared the word of God to these children. But suddenly a day, he came and he started telling about the Lord and children, they thought, the father, children, the family members, they thought, the father-in-law is simply joking.
Lotu yepudu devu gurichi, vargi cheppe unnavo, indugante, iapaayin gurichi, lotu chiptunte, okay, sari, egathaali cheseyuva diga kanapatna.
I remember one brother spoke very well in a workers conference held in North India.
North India lo, prajoka brothero, elachapada, nenu nen vinnan.
He was a very good speaker, you know, the way he expounds the word is really touch our heart.
Ayana, chala manchi bodakudu, devu nekka vaakkiyani bodistunte, prasya neetakutundi.
And while we were having a dinner, I was just conversing with him and I appreciated him and I said, brother, you spoke very well this day.
Bodanucheshe, ippudu maamolga matladukuntu, ayah, irozu miru chala baga matladaeru ani anna.
And I was telling about, you know, the passage that he has took and so many beautiful things, I was just mentioning to him.
Ayana tiskunavaakki bagani, dadlo na chala sangatlo, nenu matladutunna.
So he looked at me very quietly, at last, he hold my hand and told me, one thing, brother Samson, please pray for my children.
Na cheyipadkuni, emi matladleedo, nenu inni matladutunna, akariga na cheyipadkuni, ayah, na pillalgurichi praradinsava, ani adiga.
And I could see there is a tears in his eyes.
A maat chiptu, unna ga aynakkaralolo neeluduchuseno.
And he said, I have two kids, one son and daughter, son did not believe in the Lord and daughter also married to someone and who is not in the Lord and both of them have gone astray.
Na kumaru, prabhu ni, svasamunsaleru, kumarthe, okanyuni vivahan chesutni velipoini.
And he said, it was my fault that they are of that condition, because in my, in their childhood, I never encouraged them to go to Sunday school, I never encouraged them to attend the youth meeting, I never encouraged them to be serious in the word of God or in the presence of God and today, I am bearing those consequences.
Na pillalni chennapudu, Sunday schoolik velavan chapaladu, lakpothe sangakarikramalik velavan chapaladu. Anadu nenuchesina, apaniki, inadu, nenu falitana, nuvisunnavanu, anna.
Brother, one second brother, I have one difficulty, I'll come back.
Carry on, carry on.
Yeah, sorry for the interruption. So, so what happened, he said, because of that, today, my children are not interested to come to the presence of the Lord.
Prabhu sanidiki, anadu nenuchesina, panninibate, inadu prabhu sanidiki, varu ralayakapotunnavaru, ani baadapattan.
My dear parents, those who are listening, we need to be very, very careful in our life, the decision that we take towards our children, the seriousness that we have towards their career, their studies, their near future, the same seriousness we have to put them, to bring them up in the presence of the Lord.
Idi maatavintuna, pri mainu talidandalara, chadupatla, baushitupatla, yantasharadhatiiskuntamukada, antaga, varu prabhu lo undalani, sharadhatiiskavali.
Otherwise, when we come to that stage of Lord, our children will rebel and we will have no words, we will have to only cry, because we will not be able to bring the history back, we cannot do anything, we will be helpless and only we can cry.
Okavela, alagunachekkute, lotu valay, maatalundo, kaniirutoti, yaravada mathrme, ekka charitra ni venakittisukuralem.
Just think about, imagine about Lord, when children are making fun of the parents and saying, we are not going to listen to you, get out from here.
Ekkaninchpo, ani nu maato, ani lotu egathaali chiyuva, ri valay, kanavadche, lotu parisitentu alavachinachendi.
Just think about if the same thing happened with you and your children will do like this, just imagine how would be our condition.
Ni pillalaki, nu joakarla kanavadche, ni parisitentu alavachinachidi.
But, we will say that, the wrong happened with the law, with the Lord, the leadership, the lack of leadership, proper leadership, he is of that condition.
Idi parisitikala karana emitante, kutummulo, naayakattham sharia, ataru vahinsakapotumay dani karu.
So the first question was, how was your spiritual life? And he says, nothing, it is zero, I am crying every day.
Madhiti enti ante, na jivitamlo emileedo, denna denna mo noppinchukuntune unna, anna.
The second question we ask, how about your children? Did you bring them to the Lord? And he says, no, they are not going to listen to me. Every day, now they are there making fun of me, they don't listen to me.
Mi pillalni prabhu darikne nedipinchera, ani rendav presnaladite, varidristiki, nenu egathaali cheseyuva, na yanu, anna.
Okay, the fourth question we are going to ask, Lord, how much wealth you made? What is your bank balance?
Lotu garo, mi bank balance anta, ani adite.
So listen his answer, how he will answer, chapter nineteen from verse twenty-four and twenty-five. So listen his answer, how he will answer, chapter 19 from verse 24 and 25.
पन्तम्दव अध्यायम यरवे नालु यरवयाईदु वचनाल चोडंडी अपुडु योहोवा सोधुमा मेदनो, गुमर्रा मेदनो, योहोवायाद्दनुंडी गंधकमुनो आज्ञनी, आकाशमुंडी कुरिपिन्सी आ पटनमलोनो, आ मैदानमंततिनी, आ पटनमलो निवसिंछुवार नंदरणी नेला मोलकलनो नाशनमुचे स्यन
Here it is very clearly mentioned that whatever the money, the wealth that Lot made in Sodom was burnt in a seconds.
लोथु सोधुमालो यंत कालो संपादिंचुकुन दंत कोडा सेकंडल समयमलो गुडिदिगा मारिप्यान
Everything was destroyed.
सत्कीदी पोइंदी
Please read the verse 28.
यरवय येन्मिद वचनन चोडंडी यरवय येन्मिद्र सोधुमा गुमर्रा लत्तटुनो, आ मैदानक प्रदेशम यावत्तु चोड्डादु आ प्रदेशपुपगा आवंपगवाले लेचिस्तुंदनो अन्नाय
I like that word in Telugu, पोगा, you know?
पोगाइप्यान
Yeah, if we are away from the Lord, if we are, we are not keeping, rejecting God and His presence and earning something money or wealth, that will turn into पोगा.
देवुड़ लैकुन्दा, देव नीमाल चरिस्करचे संपादिंचिन्नांता पोगे
Yes, my dear brothers, it is a, it is a very bitter truth that we need to understand in our life.
मान जीवितमलो अर्धंचेस्को आल्सन चेदुन जमंदी
One day, we will be able to stand in a position and say that whatever the wealth that I made, whatever the investment that I did, everything seems to be nothing, it is just like a पोगा.
ओकानु रोजना प्रभुदगरने नेलबड़िनापुडु ना जीवितमलो येमी मिगलु प्रभुक वित्रेगिङ्गा संपादिंचिंदी, अंत आ केवलम पोगमात्रमे
Many people after they know the Lord, they know the truth of the word of God, but still they don't give priority to God, but rather they give priority to earn money and money. Money is everything for them and God has no place.
कोत्तमंदी जीवितमलो देवुन्नीकी चोटे उन्डदंडी, वार जीवितमलो धनमो, धनमो, धनमो मात्रमे उन्तु
Whenever comes to a fellowship, whenever comes to give priority to the Lord, they always choose to earn money, money is everything for them.
प्रभु प्रार्धना, प्रभुनु गुरिंचिना संगतल विषयमलो वार्नियाडिते वारु धनान्ने उन्तारु, प्रतिदी धनमक्वानमलो चुस्तार
Money is important in our life, but that should not take a leadership, the Lord, it should not be a Lord of our life.
धनमो मानुकी आवस्त्रमे गानी, धनमो मान जीवितानिकी प्रभु काकोडु
The Lord should be the first in our life.
प्रभुए मदतिगा ना जीवितमलो प्रभुगा उन्दा
When the Lord is not first and the money or the wealth is the first, we will regret one day like, you know, this Lot regretted, you know, everything turned into पोगा.
प्रभु प्रभुस्तानुलो लैकुन्दा, धनमो प्रभुस्तानुलो निकोस्ते लोथुवाले ओकानु रोजनी याटवाली, अंत पोग काबोताउंदी, गुडिदिकाबोतुं
So the first question we ask, "Lord, how was your spiritual life in Sodom?" And he said, "Brother, I am crying every day."
लोथु लोथुगारु सोधुमालो मी जीवितमो, तान एक अनुभव में एन्टी अंते देन देनमो नोपिन्छुकुंतुने ब्रथके अन्नात
Then he say, "How many people you were able to win to the Lord?" And he says, "Not even my family members."
प्रभुकरकै मिर यंत मंदिनी संपादिंचेरंटे, कनीसम नाकु तुम्मानी कोडा संपादिंसलैक्क्यानो अंत
The third question we ask, "How much wealth you made in Sodom?" And he says, "Nothing, brother, everything turned into ashes."
लोथु सोधुमालो मिर संपादिंचिनित्वंडी धनमो यंता, संपदयंता अंते एमी मिगल लेदंडी गुडिदमात्रमे उन्दी अंत
The fourth question we are going to ask to Lot, the last question is, "Okay, Lot, tell us about your family life, how is your wife and how is your daughters?"
नी कुट नालु प्रश्न, अया मी कुटुम्मु गुरिच चप्पणे, नी भार्या, नी पिललल संगति चप्पणे अंते
And he will answer it in verse 26.
यरवय आर्लो अंत, he is 1926, yeah. पन्तम्दी यरवय आर, आइते लोथु भार्या, आथनी वेनकनुंडी तिरिगिचुची उपस्तम्भमा आयन
Yes, my dear brother and sister, that is the result of Lot's wife.
लोथमा परिषदिति इदी
So if you look, if you ask the same question to Lot and I think if Lot is here, he would have not tell the answer, but he would have showed, "Don't ask me this question, brother, look at that pillar of salt, that is my wife."
मानु एपुडु लोथुन गनकाडितो ओकावेलाय उन्ते, ना नडकंडा याने ने चप्पल्नो अनी आ उपस्तम्भानी चुपेस्ताडादु ना भार्यानी
Yeah, all through her life, she was living a worldly life, she was living for the world and she disobeyed God and God punished her.
जीवितमंता लोकस्तुराल्लागा बतकिंदी, देवुन्चेता सिक्षिंस बढिंदी
Okay, Lot, what about your two daughters? We heard about your daughters, how are they now?
मरि नी एदर कुमार तेल गुरिंचिंदी अन्याडिते
You know what his answer is written, because of the lack of time, no need to read, but you can write it down and make a read it later. It is written from verse 30 to 38.
मुप्पयानिंची मुप्पयम्दु वर्कु, लोथु कुमार तेल काद्धा कनबड़तुंदी
I will tell you in Nessel that their daughters committed adultery with father.
विभिचरिंचेरु अने माटनो मनु चुस्ताम
My dear brother and sister, if we ask Lot, "Tell about your daughters" and I'm sure that if he would have been here and asked these questions to him, he will have been in tears.
लोथुनु नी कुमार तेल गुरिंचिंदी चेप्पयान अंते, कच्चितंगा कन्नील्ल पर्यंतमाईपोतड
Because my dear brother and sister, no father could imagine to have such an experience in his life.
ई तंड्री तन जीवितमलो यलांटी अनुभव उन्डालनी कोरुकुने कोरुकोड, अंत दुर्मार्ग कर्मयिंद
But the question comes, where did these daughters learn such stupid things in their life?
प्रश्न एम्मटंटे, यलांटी पनिक्यमालनपन्लो यक्कण निर्चुकुनारो
They learned it in Sodom.
सोधुमालो
That is the usual practice in Sodom.
सोधुमालो ई पनिक्यमालनपन्लो सर्वसाधारण
It means the fault, the wrong decision is goes to Lot only.
इद अंत यक्कड केल्तुंदी अंते, आनाडु लोथु चेस्ना तप्पुडु निर्णयम
Because Lot was the one who brought their children in such a place where the wickedness prevails in a peak.
बयंकरंगा दुष्टत्तमो सम्बविस्तुन चोटिकी बेडल नितिस्कोचिंदु लोथे
So now he is bearing the consequences.
पर्यावासनालो अनुविस्तुन्नाडलो तो
So the first question we asked about your spiritual life and he says, "Nothing, brother, it is zero."
अया मी आप्नी स्थिति एम्टी सोधुमालो अंते एमीलेदंडी सुन्ना अंत
"How many people you own to the Lord?" He says, "Nothing, not even my family members."
प्रभुकरकै मिर यंत मंदिनी संपादिंचेरंटे, कनीसो ना कुटुम्मानी कोडा संपादिंसलैक्क्यानो अंत
Okay, third question, "How much wealth you made?" And he says, "Everything turned into ashes."
सोधुमालो मिर संपादिंचिना धनमंतंडी अंते, एमीलेदंडी गुडिदा पोगमात्रमे मिगलिन
Fourth question, "What about your family?" He says, "My wife turned into a pillar of stone and my daughter become adulteress."
मी कुटुम्मो संगति चप्पणे, मी भार्या, पिललल अंते, भार्या कर्गनी उपस्तम्भमाइते, पिलललो विभिचारलया
But the story doesn't end here.
कादा एकड़तो मुगिस्पोलेर
Because if you keep reading, that you will find that there are two people, two children were born with this adultery things and the first child name is Moab and the second child name is Amun. Moabites and Amunites were born through the illegal relations with the daughters and father Lot.
अंगति एकड़तो आयपोलेर चाला दुर्मार्गता चरित्रलो निप्रवेशिंचिंदी, आक्रमंगा पुटिना यदर पिलललो वाकडो मोयाबु, मोयाबीलकु मोलपुरुष्यडो, मरकडो अम्मनो, अम्मनीलकु मोलपुरुष्यडो
If you look at Deuteronomy, chapter 23, Deuteronomy, chapter 23.
यरवय मूडव अध्यायम जित्यो प्रदेशकांडमो
And in verse 3.
यरवय मूडु, मूडु मिर चुस्ते, अम्मनीडे गानी, मोयाबीडे गानी योहोवासमाजमलो छारकोडु, वारलो पद्यवतरमु वार इननो, यन्नडुनो योहोवासमाजमलो छारकोडु
So this is a command of God to the tribe of Moabites and Amunites, for the ten generation, they should not enter into the temple of God.
अम्मनीलो बोत्र अम्मनीलो संतान गुरिंची, मोयाबीलो संतान गुरिंची देवुडिचिना कठिनमयानित्वंडी आज्ञाई
So just imagine the depth of the consequences of the decision the Lord had taken while he was young and that affected even the ten generation to come.
यवनस्तुडगा लोथु तिस्कुनोक तप्पुडु निर्णयमतोटी, तरवात तराल वार्गु कोडा नस्तं कनवड्ताव